Everyone, I was absent at the last meeting and I see on our agenda that it says Vice President will call the meeting to order. So I would ask the Board and Vice President Dooley if there's anything you want to tell me. Is there anything you want to tell me that I should know, anything I should know about my absence?
No, 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 no. We have to amend the agenda.
Okay, good evening, and I'll call the meeting to order here in the Novi Library Board. And I would ask you all to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're sorry everyone if our speaking voices are kind of muddled or whatever, we have a lot of goodies up here. And cupcakes and candies and all, so we'll try to, we'll try to use our best elocution here. Please call the roll, Secretary Bartlet.
Trustee Chair Curry.
President.
Trustee Crawford.
Here.
Trustee Dooley.
Here.
Trustee Guremurti.
Here.
Trustee Michener.
Present.
Trustee Stirring.
Here.
Trustee Bartlet's here, our student representatives are not here. Whoops, never mind.
Spoke too soon.
Student Representative Carcarla.
Okay, you all had a chance to take a look at the agenda, are there any additions or corrections, other than that one, to the agenda? If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve the agenda as printed.
Motion to approve the agenda as printed.
Okay, Trustee Michener and second, okay, Trustee Guremurti. I'm getting, I don't know, I was on vacation, what can I say, I'll try to practice more, for sure. All right, any, any, oh, you call the roll first, I guess, any discussion about the agenda first? No? All right, please call the roll.
Trustee Crawford.
Yes.
Trustee Dooley.
Yes.
Trustee Guremurti.
Yes.
Trustee Michener.
Yes.
Trustee Stirring.
Yes.
Trustee Bartlet votes yes, Trustee Chair Curry.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Okay, and you all had a chance to see the consent agenda, are there any questions about the consent agenda? Anyone? Okay, seeing none, I'll ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda as printed.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? All right, please call the roll.
Trustee Dooley.
Yes.
Trustee Guremurti.
Yes.
Trustee Michener.
Yes.
Trustee Stirring.
Yes.
Trustee Bartlet votes yes, Trustee Chair Curry.
Yes.
Trustee Crawford.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Okay, all right, and moving right along then, we are going into presentations, and one is kind of sad, for sure.
I'm not gonna say sad, because I'll tell you what, after a couple of years in dealing with COVID, I wanna go with her. No, just, I'm just kidding, but we talk about it all the time, we talk about maybe getting together for wine and still meeting up. Tonight, we are recognizing someone very special in our organization, Barbara Rakowski, Barb, come on down and join me. Barb has been the head of IT for our library for just over, well, almost 20 years, been with the organization 25. Started as a part-time employee and moved quickly into our department head role for information technology. And I'm gonna share some words, and these are not all the words. Computers, phone servers, automated return systems, clocks, scanners, printers, self-checks, Wi-Fi, sound systems, overhead speakers, microphones, iCube, and all the equipment in it. Just to name a few of just the few things that Barb has her hands on, if not more. So she has been a huge, huge part, a fixture, in our organization for 25 years. I think her biggest accomplishment is when we opened the new building, and she was on the cutting edge of bringing some fantastic new technologies to the library and to our community. And, and she did it with grace, she had some things going on in her own personal life, and yet you would have never known it because she came to work every day, and she has always been dedicated, always loyal. And, and also very much a thinker, and very thorough, and for me, I'm the opposite of that, I look for the detail-orientedness of Barb, and she brings that every day. We have had, over the years, 15 years that I've had the pleasure of working with her, the opportunity for her to actually teach me a lot about technology and, and our staff. And I have learned a ton, I've learned so many acronyms, and, and so many new things about technology, I am no expert, she is, and I have truly appreciated that over the years. She is leaving us, she is retiring, she is, she's going on to spending time with family, which I'm excited for, the opportunity to travel with friends, which I know she's excited about. So I'm, I, it's bittersweet, because I definitely don't want to lose her, I do wanna put out there that I've asked her to help us a little bit with some consulting in the, in the wintertime as we transition someone into our job, because it's such a big job, and she has definitely, around vacations and stuff, she'll work with us, and I, I truly appreciate that. But that's an example of Barb, is that she, in her own words, said, "I don't wanna leave you in a lurch," and it has been difficult trying to fill this position and to find someone that fits this unique job. And it is unique, because with technology, typically, technology people are in the office and behind the scenes or remote, and sitting behind a computer. This job is completely different than that, because she is also very much interacting with, not only you as board members and your, your needs, but all of our staff and sometimes our public. And that's a different role when it comes to technology, when it's, when it's someone that specific, and then she holds and has held a management role with our management team too. And that also then means, you know, being in charge of the building and being that go-to person at times as well. So it is a unique job, it is something that I truly appreciate, the years that she's given us, definitely has done an amazing job, and I am really going to miss you. I'm going to read, "It is upon your retirement, the Novi Public Library presents this certificate of appreciation to Barbara Rakowski, and wishes to express a sincere thank you and gratitude for your 25 years of dedicated service. We wish you a retirement full of good health, happiness, and great success." I truly appreciate you. You wanna say anything? Yeah, first I'm gonna say, wow, that was, that was quite a speech. Just a few words, nice and big, 'cause I don't have my glasses on. It's been an amazing ride, the past 25 years, I've been fortunate enough to work with so many talented and wonderful colleagues over the year, and I am truly grateful that I was able to be a part of that team. The library has achieved so many wonderful accomplishments that I definitely will be able to look back with pride next week, when I walk out the door for the last time as a staff member. I would like to wish you the best of luck in the years to come, and I can't wait to see what amazing new accomplishments, accomplishments, I didn't cry, are in the library's future. Thank you again for this opportunity.
Oh Barb, I'd like to say, oh, sorry, I just would like to say, and maybe some of the other members would like to say something. I always appreciated the fact that, it seems like when we'd really call on you, there was always a crisis, you know, it was, it was a crisis. And you would have to come running to kind of set up something for the Historical Commission, or somehow or other help us convert some computer, something or other, I mean, I don't even know the words to use. And you did it with such calmness, which was really reassuring, when you're a presenter and you're putting on a program or something, and you have an audience sitting there waiting for something to happen. You know, the calm demeanor really does make a difference, but always you brought that, in spite of all the crises that you were involved in, you know, when, when there's something technical that would go wrong, and I'm sure it happened every day, just about. What, who are we gonna call? Barb, you know, and I'm finally just getting to pronounce your last name, and so I'm kinda sad, you know, that, you know. Well, hopefully we'll still be seeing you, but thanks for all you've done for us, I mean, the, the library is, is all the better for everything that you've done and you've been a part of, truly. So, any other board member? Yes, Trustee Michener?
Barb, so, I don't know, I think the, I'm gonna tell a little story.
Uh-oh.
I'll make them brief, I promise, it won't be like, you won't have to set the timer on me. But I really appreciate you so much, and I see you around the library often, but it was a time when I was president and we sat together at Stephen Rocky's, where I just like fell in love with you, because you were so sweet and so thoughtful, and we just laughed, like, the whole night, although I couldn't eat anything, 'cause for some reason I was vegetarian then. So I was hungry, but you kept me happy, you kept me nurtured with laughter instead of food, but I think one of the biggest things I'll miss about you is your smile. You know, I know that you work hard, I know that your, your workload continues to get bigger, I've bugged you several times, remember when my password and my email, Julie Mads?
We got it all worked out.
Remember all that mess, and you just were so gracious, sometimes when we're not the tech people and we're bugging the tech people, we feel a little bit of apprehension, you know what I'm saying? Like, you never, you never made us feel like, I'll speak for myself, you never made me feel like I was incompetent, because my email didn't work or anything like that. I've never gotten anything from you but a smile, even in the hardest years, right, so it's been eight years with you, and I've been happy with it, so.
Thank you.
I know you're gonna have fun and do great things, just don't forget about us.
Oh, I am so much looking forward to this, I know I should not be this excited, but I really am, it's been a long time coming.
Great, anyone else? Oh yes, Sreedy?
Yeah, so as a techie myself, I kind of appreciate what you've got through this organization. It seems like every great idea over the last 25 years involves moving something over to the tech world, from door locks to telephones to copy machines and projectors, so.
Everything.
'Cause I was actually chuckling, is Julie Reddell off the subject charter?
Anything with a plug.
Looks like everything that breaks.
Everything that breaks, yeah, there too.
No, but it's, so I don't, I don't even know if like, you know, maybe the pace of change will slow down, but the period where you've been there, right, I think you probably started before we had a website?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, so it's, you can't imagine that every single idea is in tech, and I really appreciate the fact that you all, the project continues.
Well, thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, member Stirring?
Yeah, just to express my thanks, I've known Barb for a long time, and, I mean, everything, I mean, I'm not a techie person, so I mean, this is all like foreign language to me almost, but anyway. Always were so helpful, I mean, including even setting up my email on my phone to the library and things like that, but I mean, in, I, my experience that I think, you know, I spent the most time with Barb was really with the new building.
Yes.
And in the new building, there were so many tech things going on that we didn't have at the old building, and once again, I felt lost, 'cause I'm not a tech person, but Barb just stepped up and made it seem so simple to those of us who weren't in the tech world, and it worked out, I think, fairly, very well, in terms of all those ideas, and it's, tech is always changing, and you, you are never stuck in last years or 10, 10 years back. You're always on the forefront, and appreciate everything that you've done, I really wish you happy retirement, and I'm sure you'll have a good one.
Thank you, very much, I appreciate the kind words, thank you again.
Thanks again, Barb.
So we are celebrating with her next week, so just wanted everybody to know, but we are very appreciative, thank you Barb, all right, thank you.
Okay, and now we have another presentation, and it's gonna be Dana.
I'm also retiring. I'm just kidding, I've got a couple more years.
Oh, oh, we gotta change her, change her speed.
All right, so I am here today to talk about our strategic planning, more specifically, our survey. Excuse me, it is included in your board packet, it's on page 87, if you wanna turn to it, but I do have it blown up over here on the screen. Let me kind of scooch it over, oops, hold on, okay, maybe that's a little bit better. Okay, so our strategic planning process is going on right now, we're working with Rethinking Libraries, and we've met with them a bunch of times more recently to discuss the survey and to figure out dates and times and things for our focus groups. So the survey is one piece of our strategic planning process, and then the focus groups are the second, you know, part of the process as well. So this survey, Rethinking Libraries, provided with us, kind of in a rough draft, and then the Library Board Strategic Planning Committee looked at it, the staff Strategic Planning Committee also looked at it. And then we have this draft here, which some parts are a little bit changed since then, which I'll point out as I go through the questions. So the survey is gonna be really helpful to listen to the Novi, to Novi residents and really hear what services and, and different things that they want, and to make sure that what the library is providing is catered to their needs. And this, we haven't had a strategic plan in quite a few years, it's been five years, okay, so I'm sure those, those, those needs have changed since then. All right, so here's the beginning, we're just notifying the residents that the survey is 10, about approximately 10 minutes long, and that it's completely anonymous as well. So go on to the first question, so how often do you visit the Novi Public Library in a typical year? So we've got some options there, which you can see. Next question, if you are not a regular library visitor in a typical year, please tell us why not. So definitely we wanna get to our portion of Novi residents who do not come and, and use the library on a regular basis, to figure out why, and what we can do to help them and bring them into our building. Why do you visit the Novi Public Library? Julie, I'm so sorry, did you want me to go through each, each option?
It's up to the Board, I know I gave it to you in advance, but.
Sorry, so if you wanna go line by line, or if you just have specific questions.
Why do we do specific questions? Because I'm, I don't know, I don't wanna speak for everyone, but I took a look at the survey, and I went question by question, and I'm assuming that many of you did the same thing. So how about if there's some specific, and particularly the changes that have been made?
Okay, we can do that.
And if there's any other questions about the survey itself, let's do that.
Okay, sounds perfect, thank you Dana.
They can read, for sure.
These are a lot of options here, so.
Right.
Yeah, so we, when revive, or I should say, when Rethinking kind of gave us this one question, they didn't have iQ Maker Space, they didn't have the cafe in there, they didn't have our local history room, so we tried to make sure that library, Novi library-specific items were in this question. And, and a lot of the other questions too. All right, our next question is, thinking about the Novi Public Library, please indicate how strongly you agree or disagree with the following statements.
Do you wanna talk about the paring down at all?
Um, yeah, so originally they had two more options up at the top here, so there was a strong. a strongly agree, um, agree, neither agree nor disagree, disagree, or strongly disagree. And so, with, was that, those options, yeah, so just talking with the library board committee, decided to pare down and just say, agree, neither agree nor disagree, disagree or don't know, or, you know.
Trying to get better answers, and not leave it so gray, so.
Yep. Our next question's a fill-in, so why do you think, or what do you think are the two and three most important overall issues facing the Novi community?
And that'll allow us to address community questions and concerns, if the library can weigh in and provide resources, services, programs, that would, that would meet, make, meet that.
All right, next one, what is the library's role in the community? Do you think the Novi Public Library should be involved in the following areas? And same thing with this, the top portion here, to pare that down to the four options. Our next one, library services. So, services available at today's public libraries are continually changing to better serve the community. Please tell us how you'd rate these library services in terms of importance to this community. So, here's our, so the importance to the Novi Public Library. So, this is, yeah, we kind of got into adding, you know, more specific items to, to Novi, and things that we have in the library.
And I appreciate it from the, or from the consultant on this, the must-have and nice-to-have, I like the language of that, so it kind of pushes someone into making a choice for what's important to them.
And then, of course, if there's something that's on the list, that our residents want to have on that list, we have an option here for them to fill that in. Next question, on programs at today's public libraries are continually changing as well, please provide your thoughts on programs at NPL. So, do you or anyone in your immediate family attend programs at the Novi Public Library? Please check all that apply. And then continued, do times for programs generally meet your needs? Because that's a big thing, too, we want to make sure that we're not scheduling programs that are during dinner time, or during, like, nap time, and that kind of thing, so we can hammer down and make sure we, we get them scheduled in the right way. On what types of programs would you like to see at the Novi Public Library? Please check your top five. Lots of good things on here, I'm excited to see what the community says. And then, of course, we've got the option at the bottom to provide examples if it's not listed on that list. Library hours, this was a request to have this added, it wasn't originally put into the survey that Rethinking gave to us at the beginning, to make sure that our, our operating hours are what the Novi, what the community actually wants. So, we have the hours listed there, and then how would you rate the hours of operation for NPL in terms of convenience for you and your family? And then, thinking about your personal schedule and commitments, what is the best time for you to visit the Novi Public Library? For each day, please check the time slot that works best for you. If you do not plan to visit the library, please leave it blank. Here's our equity, diversity, and inclusion at NPL. Library, libraries value all members of their community, services should be available that are useful to all. For each of the following aspects of, of NPL, please indicate whether you feel that they are addressing equity, diversity, and inclusion. We have a number of services and things here. What do you think is NPL's main role in equity, diversity, and inclusion? Please check all that apply. Yeah, because with our last strategic plan, we didn't have any information about DEI efforts, so this will be fantastic to have this, this data. And what do you think NPL could be doing better to address equity, diversity, and inclusion? It's a fill-in option. Um, the Novi Public Library uses a variety of methods to communicate its news and community to the community. We are interested in finding out how you would prefer to learn about library news and events, so this is for me, because I help with all the communications and, and marketing at the library, so I want to know, are we getting the word out in the, in the right way? Is there an area that we should be marketing better? So, I'm hoping, get some good data with this as well. And then, the option for any other ideas or comments. Next, additional information, so this is more of, like, demographics of the person who's taking the survey, so do you have a Novi Public Library card? What is your age? In what city or community do you live? Um, in this version, this draft version of the survey, number 20 is listed here, but it's been put into number 21, so I'll scroll down so you see. Yeah. So, in here, that is put in, into this question, instead of separated. What languages are spoken in your home? Please check all that apply. The formatting on these are kind of funky, but, and the actual survey, it all looks good, and it, you know, all the words are listed correctly and straight. Um, is there something we've forgotten? Please provide any additional thoughts, ideas, or suggestions you have about the Novi Public Library. And then, a thank you for community.
And we, oh, nope. Yes.
Tara?
Sorry, I didn't put these on, but I think you said my name. Isn't that weird? Like, I didn't have my glasses on, so I couldn't really hear you. I don't know how that works, but, so, 20 and 21, the only thing I would say is for the Hispanic, Latino, or Spanish. So, Latino refers to male, and Latina is women, so sometimes what they do is Latinx. If you didn't want to do that, then you'd want to say Latino or Latina. It's, it's a gender-specific thing. And I'm just wondering, based on that, I don't know how diverse the group is that put the survey together, or culturally competent, just for that reason, if it needs to come by DEI or not, but that's just one, one thing that I noticed, that I would fix.
Thank you.
Great. Anyone else?
Uh, just, I just, I wanted to clarify from the, we, we as, we as the, the strategic committee, actually, we had the first draft, and then we made several modifications. In talking to Rethinking Libraries, they separated the Hispanic question from the, from the race question, primarily due to federal regulations and tax regulations. We felt that that was a little bit too granular and unnecessary, so we suggested putting it back in. I, I don't know, in fact, their question, I don't think they did do the Latino versus Latina.
So, we can request?
We can, we can ask them about it, but yeah, but I, but, you know, so that, that request actually came from our committee to say, just put it into the main question, because, you know, if, if somebody's checking that they're Hispanic, they may not, you know, they may feel 21's redundant.
You know, it's.
I dread, I dread.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, and I appreciate that. I, I don't think it's a hit on asking the question, I think it's Latino means male, and Latina means female, so if you're gonna do that, Latinx is usually safe, or you could do both.
I would just add, most state and Michigan forums, we usually put question 21 before question 20, and then question 20 usually has two lines, including Arab-Americans, and that's because both of those groups racially generally, generally check white, but they sometimes scatter across multiple racial groups.
So, are you looking for Arab-Americans to be added?
I'm, I'm just saying that's a standard, it's what I think.
Would you want to say Middle Eastern?
Question 20 will go away.
I think.
Yeah, it's a sub-question 21.
It is, it's all going into 21.
Okay, that's.
I think it would be Middle Eastern.
Yeah, it's the Arab slash Middle Eastern, I think, so.
And Priya, did you want to address?
Yep.
The question.
Yeah, a couple of things. I think number 11, I'm very happy to see that the responses are more like direct. Julie, as you said, strongly, so for 11, how would you rate the hours? Again, I'm, I'm skeptical about, excellent is good, poor is okay, no opinion, but good and fair, I'm not sure what you're gonna get out of it. So, I would just keep it to one, so that it's excellent, then good, poor, and no opinion.
Got it, remove the fair.
Yeah, remove the fair.
Yeah, because it's more.
More of like.
Yes, we're trying to get some. Very good, thank you.
And I know, you know, we talked about a little bit more class, granularity, or a subclassification within the Asian community, and I apologize, I got that information to you in an email today.
Good.
So, I looked at the online census, I spoke to a few people, and then I sent it to you, like, you know, like Chinese, Japanese, Filipino, Korean, and there were a few things. So, you might want to take a look at it, and I did not remember languages, but I'm so happy to see languages, because I know with Deerfield, there are about 32 languages.
Right, yes.
I was looking at a multicultural night, so, yeah.
So, we had Hillary work and, and identify some of those languages, as well as languages that are currently supported through the library as well, so she provided that information. But I agree with you on the granular, on the, on the category of Asian, and I'd like us, as a committee, if we can improve that a little better. I think it'll be good for us to know more from that community.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else?
Yeah. And just kind of three comments, that are just, or enjoy, that you want, anything else? If question number two could sort of map to what they selected in question number one, here you're asking if you're not a regular library visitor, so, like, if, like, if you had numbers on number one, if you already checked four, five, or six above, just, so you could clear, because otherwise, you're gonna get answers from people that might not apply, or something.
I see what you mean, yeah, so it's like you click, like, daily, you know, you're not, you don't, maybe shouldn't get question two?
Some, somehow they clarified.
Yeah, we can see with them, I think they're.
But, question number nine, I think is a good question, but I think the way it's written, you're not gonna get, I'm almost wondering if there's a way, and I'll leave it to you guys, that you could combine that into what you're doing in, like, 11 and 12? Because do they even know what times programs are, or, just a thought, it's, you know, I don't want to wordsmith your work there, just, and then, I'm glad you're asking question 16. I'm, if, it'd almost be ideal, in my mind, if there's two columns, one, do you currently receive? Like, for example, you may be doing a lot of work on email, but we may have a really lousy list, or very bad spam penetration, or, you know, we're getting filtered or something, right?
Yeah, mainly.
Just so we can make it a parallel, have you seen these, or do you, would you like to receive these, or, so, that was it, otherwise, I think you're getting, hitting all the key points here, so.
Okay, anything else? Yes?
Another, another clarification on number nine, just so that the board is aware, we had some, both as a committee and also meeting with Rethinking Libraries, we discussed this one at length, trying to figure out, you know, marrying it to number eight, which is, we have an event at the library, is this time convenient? And the feedback we got from Rethinking Libraries was that this is a very tough one to nail down, because your answer to number eight, children's programs are going to have different requirements than adult programs, you're going to have adults with children that are in daycare and are looking for evenings, it's, it's a very tough one to nail down. What they said is they typically look at this when they do the, the sessions, getting feedback from the individuals, they found it to be much more efficient than trying to wordsmith a, a times area. So, that's why there's the combination of those times, and the times on the next page in 11 and 12.
Okay. Anyone else? Yes? Member Stirring?
You know, I, I think it was a, it's a very good survey, and very comprehensive, and at the same time, not too long as to discourage people from completing it. My, my question, and I don't know if we've got to this point or not, about how we're going to plan on distributing the survey.
How about my list?
Here we go.
A whole list here.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so for this survey, so we're not, obviously, we have some more work to do with it, we need to meet again with Rethinking Libraries to do some changes on here, so we won't plan to launch it for probably about a month, we want to get it out for a whole month before we do our focus group sessions, will be the week of February, like, 6th, I think, is that week?
No, January 6th, so that is back.
Well, yes, yes, yep.
So, it'll be early January, then.
Yeah, yeah, and the focus groups will be in.
Before the, the public in-person and virtual sessions, feedback sessions begin, right? Get this, yep.
Yes, so planning to, one, on our website homepage, we can do kind of a pop-up box, it'll come up as soon as you get to the page that says, hey, we're doing our strategic planning process, we want to hear your voice, we want to know what your needs are, so we'll have, obviously, a link to the survey, and a link to register for those, in, those focus, those in-person and virtual focus groups for the community. We'll do a separate e-newsletter blast, so that goes to 24,000 of, of our users that are on that list, library card holders, and Patreon point's awesome, that if, if, you know, I can see in the data of the email, that if maybe the link to the survey wasn't clicked by somebody, I can gently send an email maybe in a week or two, and just say, hey, we'd love to hear, you know, love to hear what you think, please take our survey. So, I'm hoping that maybe that'll drum up a little bit more participation in the survey that way. Obviously, there are monthly e-newsletter, too, it'll go in that and be featured. I'm currently, along with Amy Crockett, she's our meeting room coordinator, but she's also on our staff strategic planning committee, she and I are working together to come up with a postcard that we're gonna be sending to all of Novi's residents, that'll have the same kind of information, QR codes to the survey, to the focus groups to register, as well as links, too, so hopefully get those into the hands of, of our residents. Obviously, our paper, other papers, so Engage Magazine, it'll be in there, Novi Today Magazine, Amy had written, or she wrote, a really nice article to go in that magazine, that'll come out in February, about our process and, and why we're doing this, so that'll have that. I'll reach out to Novi Note and Novi News as well, hopefully we'll get articles in there. Obviously, social media, posting as much as, you know, every couple days, or, you know, maybe once a week or something, just to remind people to take the survey and, and check it out. The Novi can be school district, so we can hear the needs and, and wants of our students and of their parents, and then wherever else I can find to put it out into the universe.
Oh, yeah, City of Novi, too. Yep, using them as a cross-promotion.
Mm-hmm. As you do book discussion groups, are you taking surveys with you to do book discussion groups?
We'll have them at the library.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I don't want it to be specific to a program, as they come in, they will, they will be available for people to take, so I'd rather have just a, when you're walking in, a focal point for people to grab them, it's gonna be hard to get everybody consistent, and so I don't want to do that, because then someone might be pushing and not, I, I want to be careful with that. So, having it just readily available when you're walking in the building to grab it.
I guess I'm thinking about people that don't get to the library, I'm thinking more about the book discussion groups.
I'm sorry, yes, the outside.
And some of the other places that.
Absolutely, yep, our outside organizations.
Yeah, in the outreach area, I think that that would be a, a good place, because those people are obviously appreciating the services of the libraries, you know, we'd like to know what they think.
We can make sure that our NPL at our door, who are getting bags, Fox Run will get a copy of it, along with, they'll be part of the postcard, because, you know, they have individual addresses, so it's all Novi zip codes, we've verified all of them in order to go out for that postcard, for everyone to get it. So, every household and business will get it in our community, so that covers the, you know, the number of households that we have. It will be in Engage, would you cover it? I, I think we've covered pretty well, all of our, if, if for some reason you haven't heard, and you need us to get something out, please let us know, because we will try and get, get it out as much as possible. We'll be looking for you as board members to take links and send them out, send them to your HOAs and things like that, and push it, because that will be helpful for us, because it's a reminder from you to them as, as community members, so we'll make sure that you have all of that information, links and stuff. In fact, Dana can, I'll send that to you directly in emails, and then you can use it from there. That might be the best way to do that.
The individuals that use our services through the visually impaired, I'm thinking about the visually impaired group, what would be a way for them to participate, especially if they're homebound? How could we involve them?
I mean, we can get it to them through NPL at your door, if they're, if they're, but in terms of how they would take it, they'd probably need assistance from someone in order to, to, to take it. I know that we have an ADA compliance on our, on our website, so if it's something visual, they, they're able to expand it, you know, and make the font larger, things like that. But we can get it, you know, we can give it, get it to MAC, we can get it to Fox Run, we can give it to Rose, Anthology, those are all connections we already have, so that we're covering our, our senior community as best as possible. Also, the school district, we're gonna be working on a student, so you've seen the major general survey, but we're going to be working on a student survey that will go to first through sixth grade, we're going to be asking for feedback from our youngest, if the school will, will allow us to do it, to send it out, we're gonna be asking our, our youngest users as well, which I think will be, will, will be great to get that feedback. They've put that survey together where it has pictures and stuff to help the kids, because obviously if they're younger, language might be, might be difficult, but working on it as, working on that as well for the young community to answer. We will do focus groups with our teens, in fact, we have a date where we'll actually go over to our Novi High School during lunch, and that's, that'll cover all lunches, that's the two thousand teens, and hopefully get feedback directly from them.
You will see us. We might be using you.
So just, you know, so we're really thinking about, you know, that outreach and where to get into buildings in order to get that solicitation of it as well.
What about organizations that we are really connected to, such as Rotary?
Right.
You know, even though they may not be Novi residents, or they're going to the meetings, are the surveys going to be readily available to those groups or organizations?
Great question, so actually, those groups are being targeted for having them come into the building and meet for a focus group. So not only will they participate in the focus group, they can, they can get the survey and we can send it out to them as well. So yes. Our chamber, I'm sure we won't have a problem putting it out to our chamber and making a link for people to connect and respond. So we've got a, we've got a really good list of organizations and groups that we will be connecting with.
With the goal to have the information back by February?
No, the goal will be to have the information back by March for the board retreat, in order for all that information to be dissected from there as to now what are we focusing on and bringing to the plan.
Okay.
So they need about a month, too.
But there will be like an end date for the survey.
Yes, so there, I believe it's, we're, I think they were looking at January sixth to about February sixth, before they start the focus group, so, yep. It might, it might overlap a little bit in that week that they're in town, so that when they're talking to people, those in-person ones, but that's the in-person sessions that we can be getting that feedback.
I have a question.
Sure.
So that, February is that special meeting, right, Brian?
Yes.
Where all of us as trustees?
No, that's March.
Is it all?
Oh, you're talking, I'm sorry, you're talking about the board meeting, yes, your board focus meeting, yes.
The board focus meeting.
I sent out a date for you already on your calendars.
Yes, so what date is that again?
I can tell you, hold on one second.
Thank you.
It's the first week of February.
The first week of February?
Sorry, second week, because the first week starts, yeah. It is the ninth. It's a mandatory from ten-thirty until one-thirty, no, sorry, eleven-thirty to one-thirty is the Library Board Strategic Planning Feedback Session.
So.
Yep, February ninth.
Okay, and then March is the board retreat where this would be closed up, maybe?
Yes, this is where they will, from, from the feedback sessions that we have in February, they will look for community members, a few board members from our committee, staff, a number of those people to come, a large, maybe twenty to twenty-five people that will help put the actual strategic plan together, like focus on the major areas of what that plan looks like. Yes, so that's in March.
And I know that we're working on something, we'll have a meeting soon with Bylaws, but if you, you probably know where my brain is at, so if you are, so for example, if you are a board member now, but then in March, when it's time for the retreat, there's, there's new people that potentially will be coming in, so like, how is that overlap covered? Do you see what I'm saying?
I mean, community members, you know, I, does anyone from the committee want to address that, but, I mean, anyone would.
Because there's a mandatory meeting for board members, so that's really important because it's mandatory, you get what I'm saying? Okay, and then some of those board members, may not be board members, come the time for things to get settled up.
We have it set the first week of, the third week of March, March twentieth, so as far as I understand, everyone's good until the end of March, in terms of this board.
Okay.
We, and you had asked that at a prior meeting, I made sure that the March dates were prior to anyone coming off of their term.
Isn't it March first?
It's March first.
It is March first.
I've been hoping this stuff like.
March first is the, the.
Changeover.
Is the changeover. So that, what Tara's saying is possible. I mean, I would, I would think that we would extend an invitation to anybody affected by that.
And they'd be a community member coming in, sure.
We do have to have, we have discussed, we do have to have, if anybody beyond just the strategic committee is involved, who are board members, we do have to get advance notice from the other members of the board attending, because that will become a regular meeting.
Right.
And we will have to, we will have to announce it, put out an agenda, and while, while they may not be a selected member of the committee that's putting together the plan for Rethinking Libraries, the public will be allowed to, you know, to attend at large. So we will have to, I mean, we'll have to handle that when the time comes, but I would think that anybody affected by that, we could certainly, we'll certainly.
Be part of it.
And I know that, and I don't mean to cut you off, I apologize, I know that we're working on things with that, but because I've been looking at charters and things like that and dates and talking to Courtney and the clerk's office, I'm trying to figure out if there's overlap with different things, because you were really strategic in reminding us of our officer situation, so that's why I'm like, oh, this is a very important committee.
Yep, it is, yeah, yeah.
And I don't think I brought that up before, because I just started digging into this more when Brian.
Oh, got it, okay. I, yeah, I wouldn't want anyone not to be part of it, though.
Sure.
The process, if you've started with us, I would want them to stay along with us so that we can continue the work.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay, anything else for Dana?
No, just happy, happy.
Number story.
Just a couple thoughts as we're talking about this, and it actually reminded me a little bit of the survey that, you know, my family got selected for, for the City of Novi, that there's multiple ways, obviously, of people filling these things out, so does it make sense on it, or is it too redundant to say only fill it out once? If people can pick them up from many sources. And then, second of all.
You can go right at the very beginning.
Will either the survey itself or the introduction have a deadline in terms of when they have to fill it out?
Yes, and we'll get that. They, I think they're saying around the sixth of February, like it'll go out for one month, that it'll sit out, January sixth to February sixth is the detail at this point.
That is really smart.
But no, that's a great point where please only fill it out once, yes.
If there's a survey from the city said you could do it online, you could do it by mail and stuff like that.
There are multiple ways to take it, please only, please only do it once.
Please only respond once.
I like that, thank you.
To offer some point of clarification on that memory story, too, we did talk about that with Rethinking Libraries, because we were also concerned of redundancy data. And what they said is going into this type of process, you will end up having that show up, but they're so used to seeing that, that they'll know how to parse that out. So that was, that was extra confidence that we got from them.
But I think it's good for a good reminder, I think it's easy language that we can put in here.
Please fill out only once, yeah.
Okay, anyone else?
Just a procedural question, I see this exact same survey comes up under matters for board action, can we just dispose of that matter right now?
Let's, we'll follow the agenda, I mean, let's follow the agenda, yeah. Okay.
All right, thank you so much.
Well, thank you very much for the explanation.
Dana, thank you. Happy holidays, everyone, happy New Year, I'll see you all next year.
Just for everyone's information, Dana was invited to go to the Novi City Council meeting this month, and she presented our, our plan, our, I mean, our.
Annual report, yeah.
End of the year report, and did a great job.
Thank you.
And so she made a really nice presentation, and the city was, I don't think they had any questions for, well, just a few comments and questions.
I know, yeah.
Yeah, they absolutely do, yeah, yeah. They were very happy about the whole thing, yeah. So it was really good, we did, she did a great job presenting there, so, thanks for that, too.
Thank you all, thanks Dana.
Thanks, Dana.
Okay, moving right along on the agenda here, we'll have our first public comment. So in order to hear all citizen comments at a reasonable hour, the Library Board requests that speakers respect the three-minute time limit. This is not a question-and-answer session, however, it's an opportunity to voice your thoughts. With the Library Board, and citizens must state their first, last name, and address. Anyone wishing?
Hello.
Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Sharon Trumpy. I see that you're going to be discussing your collections policy and your reconsideration policy today, and I just wanted to mention, November twenty-ninth, I attended the Salem South Lion Library meeting about the book reconsideration that they were entertaining. I don't know if any of you were there, there were literally hundreds of people there, so I may have missed you, but if you were not in attendance, I'd encourage you to go to their website and watch the meeting online. It was excellent, as I was driving there, I was kind of questioning my sanity, going to a neighboring community, but it was very inspiring, and I was very impressed by the board and how they handled the reconsideration. They had a two-pronged test that relied on state and federal law, and it was very well-run, very respectful, they had sixteen books that had been requested for reconsideration, the library director had voted to keep all of those books, there was an appeal, so it went to the Library Board, and the Library Board decided unanimously to keep all of the books in the collection, but they did a really lovely job of thoroughly discussing each book and why it met the criteria for their collection, and it was a great meeting. I did not see, I certainly may have missed it, because your collections policy is very long with lots of red and yellow, but I did not see any reference in your reconsideration policy to state and federal law, so I'll leave that up to you if it's necessary, but it was clearly the linchpin of how they made those decisions at Salem South Lion Library, so, thank you very much.
Okay, anyone else?
Hi, I'm Cannon Mitchner, because of the NPL, Ms. Julie and Ms. Hillary, because of the NPL, Ms. Julie and Ms. Hillary, I was able to host a table. I, I feel like, I feel like all kids should have their own business, I feel like kids should be equal to adults and not singled out for bad things that they were doing, something else, with, even though you should not be doing it anyway, which is why I made a campus business, it helps you express your emotions and give to charity groups. I want to thank NEF, NPL, and Ms. Ju- Julie, and, and Ms. Hillary, thank you.
Okay, very good. Anyone else? I see, we'd like your name and your address, please.
Mike DeShano, 1191 South Lake Drive, and we are once again approaching budget time, and those of you who've been on the board before COVID, probably remember what I said back then, and what I'd like to have, I can't thank the library enough for the things they do, so, you know, the program's trying to be everything to everybody, you're just doing an impossible job, and a great one at that, which is, so, but what I would like to say and suggest is that we continue to focus on the international youth collection, and I guess that you've already spent a lot more effort and time looking at the international community, and I see that twenty-five percent of your collection budget is directed towards the DEI group of people, and I also see that picture books is the number-one item being collected from the library, and I think picture books, to me, means the children's selection, so I would like to see the board focus on getting more international books in foreign languages. I see that the Policy Committee has had some most interesting discussions, especially as it comes out to DEI and other areas. I do like that the Policy Committee has added a whole paragraph on the international collection, I think that definitely reflects the intent of the diversity, equity, and inclusion efforts that the Library Board has been involved with. So I, I think that, you know, outside of these meetings, substantial amount of good work has been done. Along those same lines, I see that in the questionnaire, questions, at least thirteen and fourteen that were presented today, are not using the same terminology, instead of calling it DEI, they're calling it EDI, so I would like to suggest that there be some consistency if we're going to use committee names and have questions that pertain to particular areas, that we pick one or the other and be consistent in our terminology. I think question number three talks about just kind of open-ended areas, and I would hope that the comment box is large, so that we can get lots of comments, assuming that the computer can handle it, and that it's not just a very short little box like it was in the printout. I think that, at least in my experience, going back several decades, first exposure is probably like most of us, hopefully, where your parents took you to the library, because they wanted you to get a head start with your education. And I know that there's a lot of questions that kind of dance around that, but there's not really a specific question that says, you know, are you bringing your children, your grandchildren, or others to prepare them for school? I think that there may be some items that pertain to why this particular group of people comes to the library, don't know that there's a good place for that, because the survey is pretty all-encompassing in a lot of open-ended areas, but, you know, I do believe that the thousand books before kindergarten really highlights that this, that we're trying to do that, get the parents, grandparents, relatives, to get their children excited in the library, and that's probably my fondest memories of a library, is as a kid, having a children's section that was yee-bag to pick a book. We spent a lot of time on Hispanic, Latino, Spanish, there's a lot of discussions on a couple of those questions, centering around twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, I'm not sure that we were intending to highlight or segregate the Hispanic, Spanish, Latino-speaking community or not, I think we said that that question was going to disappear, I think that's number twenty, I don't know if that question's still going to be there or not, but I'm not sure that there's a particular reason, unless there is a particular reason to highlight this group of people, and I don't know why we would make that one optional, I would assume that every question on the questionnaire is optional, I certainly don't answer questions that I don't like. I would like to say that question twenty-two, to me, is my favorite one, because it doesn't say, did you come from Cuba, did you come from Central America, Guatemala? Question number two says, do you speak a foreign language, and if so, which one? I might speak Afrikaans, okay, but I don't know of any books that are in Afrikaans, so I would like to suggest, if nothing else, question twenty-two, my favorite, gets moved up ahead of question twenty-one, twenty, and those others that talk about particular backgrounds and ethnicity, okay? On a survey, if you ask me, what's my ethnicity? It's not French, I speak French, it's French-Canadian. Now where does that fall in there, okay? Until I found out that I'm a minority on some surveys at Oakland University, because every time they asked me that question, I said French-Canadian, and guess what? One day, their application said French-Canadian is a minority, so, there are some issues as far as, you know, that, but I think the language is spoken is the key, because that does suggest whether you come from one nation or another, and I think that the discussion as far as separating Asian into Japanese and Chinese makes a lot of sense, because if you've ever been to those countries, and you know their history, the Japanese and the Chinese would be about the same as saying, I'm a Russian or an American. So, so your time is up. Okay, but that's basically, that's pretty much concludes my comments, but I thank this board for everything it does.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no one else, we'll. Okay, seeing no one else, we'll go on to reports. We will ask Abhay if you have a report for us today.
I'll get started with the November report. Starting out with the Teen and Teen Library Programs, the Korean lantern making program.
Is your microphone on? I want to make sure.
It is on.
Okay.
Better than that, okay. Yeah, the Korean lantern making program was held on November 5th. And with the help of the Korean Spirit Culture Promotion Project, guests were able to make beautiful Korean lanterns, and there were 34 people in attendance. The Tailwagging Reading Buddies Program was held on November 16, where students in grades K through 8 had an opportunity in a comfortable and nonjudgmental space for a child and their family to read to a therapy dog in order to encourage their reading skills, confidence, and love for reading. There were 15 people in attendance. And moving on to the Teen Space update, during November 2022, there were 470 guests who visited Teen Space, and there was no Teen Space connected on November 7th through 9th, November 11th, or November 23rd to 25th. And Teen Space was closed early at 5:00 PM on November 10th. There was no TAB meeting in November, so I'll move on to upcoming programs. Grab and Go Snowflake Frame Kit will be held on January 9th. Grab and Go Snowflake Craft Kit will be held on January 23rd. And Tailwagging Reading Buddies will be held on 25th. And the next Teen Advisory Board Meeting will be on January 27th. And the Teen Stop Display featured young adult historical fiction books in honor of Lectures Day. And there's a picture below of some of the featured titles. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Just to add, because I know we talked before we started the meeting, I just wanted to make all the board members aware that we did receive a resignation from Rida Saleem today. So I just wanted to make you aware, and we'll work with our city and the clerk's office to see if we can get a partner to work with you throughout the rest of the school year and on, okay? All right. Thank you for your time. Have a wonderful holiday. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, under the president's report, I just want to report that last Tuesday morning, Director Farkas and I were invited to go to the Fox Run Men's Group, which also has women, you know, they don't just limit it to men. We were greeted by a large group of men and women who were anxious to hear all about the Novi Library, and also they wanted to hear about the Novi Historical Commission within the library. So Julie covered many of the new activities at the library and as much as we could in like 20 minutes, something like that. And I spoke about Novi's history and what materials are in the Novi History Room. There was a lot of interest in reading discussion groups. There seemed to be, they had a number of group discussion groups going on at Fox Run, and they were really interested in those. And they also were very interested in writing their own family history and their own history. And we answered a number of questions after our presentation, and Director Farkas invited the entire group to become ambassadors for the Novi Library. And it occurred to me that this board should also increase our participation anyway as ambassadors for the Novi Library. Director Farkas cannot be everywhere. I am so surprised sometimes by the questions that I get, and I don't really know sometimes, like everything that's going on at IQ, but she really has, has some knowledge about every single thing that's going on at the library. And there's a myriad of activities and services. So, you know, she needs to be at the library too as the manager and the administrator. So I think it's up to us. We should be the best ambassadors, actually, because we're on the board. So it's up to each member of this commission to become better acquainted with the services and programs offered through the Novi Library. I was recently asked if family pictures could be downloaded and could be put on jigsaw puzzles. And I wasn't really sure if you could do that at the IQ, but I think I, I think I said, well, yeah, I'm quite sure there, you can do that, I'm quite sure. So just to let you all know, I went to the library and I took a fam, I took a thumb drive with family pictures and put them on jigsaw puzzles for my family members. So that's one thing that you actually can do. And there's so many things in the IQ that you can do, just in the IQ alone, let alone all the other things that, all the other services and programs that we just maybe hear about through the students. I'm gonna, it's virtually impossible for us to know about every single thing, but I'm quite sure that we can improve our knowledge about what's going on at the library. So I'm going to challenge each one of you to pick or choose at least one library activity or service that you know very little about, and such as the youth space or the IQ or even the artwork in the building, to learn more about the apples that are on the second floor, to learn more about the tiles that are there. I am going to challenge you all to learn about that and maybe attend a book discussion. Going to the local history room, you can go into the local history room, and I think you would be surprised at all the information that's within the history room. Go on a trip, NPL on the road, you know, when NPL does the trips. And anyway, visit and participate as a commu, try to look at it and see it through new eyes as a community member would look at that program or service. That'll really help our strategic plan too, if we all try to do something that we haven't done before and that we take a look at it with new eyes. So we board members should be able to answer most of the questions, but above all, we need to be cheerleaders for the library, for sure. And, and a cheerleader for the plethora of services and programs and activities at the Novi Library. So that's enough of my speech to you all, but I'm going to challenge you all. Maybe I'll, maybe there'll be a quiz, you know, maybe I'll even have a quiz, I don't know. So, okay, moving along to Director Farkas's report.
So before I go on to that, I'll, I'll help all seven of you out by sending you a copy of the Inform and Inspire Include Sheet that I use when I am encouraging people to become ambassadors. So I'll give you some stats in advance, and then if you want to focus on something from President Crawford, feel free to let us know and we can, we can get you more information. But I'll give you something to start with. How does that sound? So I will send that to all of you. It's got the most updated information and just some facts. It's a great fact sheet that every year I update, that I use when the city has their ambassador program, as well as the, the employee ambassador program that we do for, for new employees as well. So be happy to share that with you. In terms of my mid-year review, that'll be in January, so I wanted you to be aware of that. I'm going to use the library goals, which starts on page 16, as kind of my guide. So that's, and then you'll also see some information come out so that you can provide some feedback. But I'll make sure I get that to President Crawford and to Vice President Dooley very soon. But I just wanted you to know where I'm coming from and kind of where I'll, where I'll focus. Okay, moving on to, I think it's treasures, right? Okay. Thank you.
Okay, we can get to page 19? Oh, sorry. Yeah, looking at page 19, we're in a relatively steady state part of the year, so that's why you see very little difference in revenues. I think most of that was some grant, state grant has come through, and beyond that is just miscellaneous rental revenue. Expenditures are going into pretty much the monthly flow. And then I guess this thing that's always weird this year is that negative in the 269 fund, and that's again the issue of our, our treasury investments, which we have to hold till maturity and they'll disappear. And fund balances and everything else are as reported.
Okay, thanks. And thanks for the heads up. You know, the agenda is just a sort of a guideline. I'm just hopping around here in sort of a, you know, because I am the president. I guess I could say that, skip right to the Julie's report because I know that you were all anxious to hear that. So, thank you very much. It's now time for our second audience participation. And once again, in order to hear all citizen comments at a reasonable hour, the library board requests that speakers respect the three-minute time limit. This is not a question-answer session, however, it's an opportunity for you to voice your thoughts with the library board, and citizens must state their first, excuse me, last name and address. Anyone wish to come forward from the audience? Okay, thank you very much. Seeing none, we'll move along to committee reports. Are there any chairs that wish to speak about their committee? Yes, number miss chair.
Thank you. I was gonna speak really quick about my loss, but I did, under Julie's director's report, I did want to quickly just lift up with my offspring, gave a comment about and talk a little bit about that, if that was okay.
Okay.
Thank you. I know I'm like, I'm messing up things. But hopefully it's encouraging. It's like a nice little Christmas gift, or holiday gift, I should say. I did want to say, this is my first time attending the pop-up market in person. I think I watched online, like in COVID times, but it was really done well. And I think that's what was, he was trying, he was saying how happy he was, he wanted to write something himself. But the pop-up market, I don't know how many of you have been able to attend, but it really is nice. It's, everybody's so friendly, can I just say? Like even if you don't buy anything, people will be nice to you still and give you samples of soap and food. It was, Hillary did a fantastic job. She smiled the whole time. And then we had people from the chamber, Farah and, oh my goodness, Janet Bloom, and just so many people saying great things about the library. We got little small business bags. It's just a nice, you said ambassador, right? See, I, look at me, taking direction.
Good for you.
So I'm just saying, it was really fantastic. He did sell all of his art.
I heard that.
Trying to say. Everything on his table went, and I don't know if a lot of people had that outcome, but it was still a really good opportunity. So thank you.
Absolutely. And I will make sure that Hillary hears that.
Yes.
She's done a great job cultivating small business. Well, you know, I think she's got it down to a science, to be quite honest. And when she first started, it was very difficult, but she has gained a following with people wanting to be involved and, and be there that weekend to sell. And it's a great opportunity for small business, which she has focused on in the past and I know has a special heart for. So I think what I'm hearing is that they're going to try and coordinate it with the Friends next year. So, you know, the Friends, they kind of have their holiday sale and holiday type items, but then the pop, so it'll be even bigger and better. So, you know, Hillary, she always is thinking and going, oh, would it make more sense if we can put them all together and bring more people in at the same time? And Gail had a wonderful concert that went with the Friends. We can always coordinate that and, and try to work out some coordination of it. But just always trying to, the, the thing, you know, and I think all of you encounter this, is you only have so many weekends with the holidays coming, right? And so if you can, if you can make that best time for someone and they get all of it at once, I think that's why she's trying to maybe put them together. But yeah, she's, great ideas, and it's been, it's been a wonderful and very well received from the community to have it at the library.
I just wanted to second what she said and what you're saying because I have a story where I have a very good friend, friends, who, you know, have not even thought about this. They're doing it, they're thinking, they want to do it. This was like the reasonable venue where they can come, I have to say.
And try.
Because, yeah, and try, because it's, you know, you have a reasonable cost, it's not like $100 or $200, and then you have the community coming. So she, in fact, came like first year last year, and we all came and supported, and I felt so good. She once again did it this year. So thank you for creating this channel for so many people.
That's Hillary, yes. Yeah. She does a great job, yeah. In fact, I met with someone today who makes hats, and I'm like, oh, I go, I will be connecting you. Because you know, we're always wearing those, you know, those radars for things for people on the staff, so it's like, okay, got a new one. So it's very exciting that we've been able to offer these things. A great way to, to connect with the community, it really is, and get them in the building. That's another reason why we do it. So, thank you.
Okay, any chair? Oh, yes.
Grab that part of it. Just really quick, so my amazing committee already knows this, but I'll just, just for the record, unfortunately, some, my dad did die, and Saturday, just this past Saturday was his funeral, so I've been really overwhelmed, and I haven't been able to nail down the time to meet with the Bylaw Committee. I have been able to meet with the other ones, but not that one that I chair. But I have been doing work, and Brian and Mark know that, and I sent some documents over. So we're, it's my goal, y'all, to meet really soon in January, but I gave you a lot of stuff to look at too. So I haven't shirked my responsibility, but I haven't been able to make time to add that in with the funeral just being Saturday. It's like the whole holiday season was his, was focused on my dad. So I just wanted to mention that.
Sure. Okay. Very good. All right. Anyone, oh, all right. Number Julie?
Yes, I have a couple. For events marketing and fundraising, the notes from our meeting are in the packet, so you can read that over. But I wanted to open up the floor if anybody attended any events. Just to start off, I did attend the wreath laying ceremony with the Historical Commission. I was representing President Crawford and the library because she's part of both. But it was, it was really beautiful ceremony, and I don't know if the community is really aware of it, but maybe next November, try to keep your eye out and kind of put that on your radar. Our local Girl Scout troops lay the wreaths in the cemetery that's off of Novi Road.
And also the Nine Mile.
And the Nine Mile, yeah. But I was at the, the Novi Road one, and it's just, it's just really nice, and it doesn't take too long. But I was happy to be there representing us, and they really appreciated library representation there. And the staff was there earlier before I got there to set everything up, and they came after to help take everything down. It was really cold, but we all were okay. So that was something that I, I wanted to make mention of and then open the floor for any other trustees, if you attended anything.
I will, I don't worry. So I guess, check, just throw mine under there.
Okay.
Almost forget about that.
And then I also wanted to make mention for DEI Committee. So, you know, we, after last month's meeting, we wanted to make sure to review again feedback from the last couple of meetings from the trustees. And also Trustee Shirakuri had some clarifications and so, that he wanted. And so we kind of went through, kind of added our refinements also before we sent it to policy, because we wanted policy to do the final say. But also what we requested, and it's in your packet as well, is to, for public record, is to make sure to add a couple of chapters from our Michigan Library's trustee manual. And it's really important because we, we as trustees, you know, obviously, we've talked about this before, but we do take an oath to defend the Constitution of the State of Michigan and the United States. And when we go through our trustee manual, they have a whole section and chapter on intellectual freedom and protecting the public's right to access information. And so there is a lot of guidance when it comes to collection policies through this manual. There is a lot of guidance in terms of what our roles are as appointed trustees. And so that's kind of the litmus of at least the baseline of where we start, so that we know what we're supposed to be doing. And so we did put that in there for everybody, just to reiterate, but also for public record. And then you'll also see a list in there of CUSAC standards. And Novi Public Library, you don't already know, was, I believe, the first, is that right? No? One of the first, one of the top five to receive excellent. And in order to maintain that, which is a pretty amazing feat, by the way, the staff puts in so much work to qualify for CUSAC. There's a lot of things that they have to make sure that, you know, they check off and, and do procedural wise. So collections and protecting intellectual freedom are part of the CUSAC. And I just wanted to let everybody know that those are things that we rate excellent at. We're going to continue to do that. But that's just extra information we wanted to, to put forth for everybody for discussion tonight. And that's it.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. Seeing no, oh, yes, number stirring.
Just to speak very briefly on behalf of the Policy Committee, you know, we took a look at the collection policy after it had been through the staff review, the board comments, the DEI. So there wasn't a whole lot left for us to do. We made a few tweaks that we thought incorporated the comments, and we had a couple of suggestions. But we met on December 1 to do that, and I don't think I have to say anything more now because it's coming up for board action later.
Okay. I know. Anyone else? Okay. So we'll move on, the matter for board action. The first matter is recommendation from the Policy Committee to approve the revised collection development policy. So they reviewed and they have made their recommendation. So I will invite a motion to approve this. Anybody want, okay? Number Mitchner, second?
I'm sorry.
I was just stating.
Please complete.
Okay, well, I'm gonna look over here for the motion, and then I'll look at this side for the second, so.
Lot of work. Go ahead, trustee Mitch, sorry.
Okay.
Recommendation from Policy Committees to approve the revised collection development policy.
And I'll second.
Okay, very good. And now discuss-
Okay. Very good. Uh, and now discussion.
Thank you. So uh, so I want to thank the committees for uh, taking my comments to heart and uh, taking a look at them. So I do appreciate that. Um, most important, I'm glad that you guys have retained the statement that our director is ultimately responsible for our collection. I think that's an important thing about having a director, something the citizens can count as where the buck stops, right? Um, so there's a couple of things here. So, so the ALA, previously in C3, C4, we would attach by direct copy, the version of the ALA uh, Bill of Rights here. And I think that's important to do. Uh, the one change that has happened in the past few years is the addition of point number seven, um, which I don't have an issue with. Um, I just want to make sure that we're, we understand what our obligations that we're, uh, so this is the one about the, your, you have a right to privacy. Um, so as we become increasingly digital, uh, just got to make sure we're not uh, writing a check we can't cash. So um, that's just something I'd like to caution all the members on there. So increasingly, there's a tremendous amount of our resources and things that we access digitally. Do we really have control over your privacy and all those things? Let's uh, let's, let's always be vigilant. In terms of how we structure the document, we seem to have included all the interpretations uh, by reference here. And interpretations are just those things. Those are dynamic documents again. So my complaint has always been, I think we should, anything we agree with, we should include the full text of, but we should not, these things are available on the ALA site. All of our librarians, all of our people use it, have access to it. There, those are again, living documents that can be changed by the ALA. Um, and so I believe when you're, if you're, the Bill of Rights, I did wholeheartedly endorse, put that in their text is, these interpretations, I don't believe we should include, again, because we're, these are effectively, we're not providing the whole document or even a document that's time bound. We are linking to a living document that the ALA changes. On an annual basis, they revisit all of these things. If you die, and I have not had time to review all of those documents, but some of them uh, will report, like there's even, like I'll give an example, things that are still under discussion at this library, uh, fine free. Within the ALA's interpretations, that's a done deal. And so we're not there yet. So, and that's one of those areas where the ALA is different than the libraries. It's not apparent. It's kind of an industry organization or things like that, but it's not, there's no direct connection outside of the fact that we view them as a resource. Um, so I believe that the ALA Bill of Rights should stop with number seven, and we should not attach all these references into our policies. That can be confusing for the staff who might interpret, future staff who might say, oh, well, we've already endorsed all these documents. Those documents themselves are living documents that as you, if you go, you'll see they're being adopted and edited every so often.
You are correct, um, trustee Sherri Curry. I wasn't sure when you had asked me a question, but we go with just the direct ALA Bill of Rights. We don't actually go with all the interpretations. It is just what the stated information is. I provided that all as just additional information for you at this time so that you had everything, you had access to everything as we were going through all of this.
Okay. Thank you. Um, pardon me, one other point, my phone just went. Okay, so now the freedom to read does not appear to have had any changes made to it. I'm not.
Yeah. And I haven't checked lately, but I, we will, that's why it's an appendix and not a policy anymore.
Okay.
We want to make sure that we, you know, periodically check for updates and relink it. Um, actually it'll link directly just to the ALA website where you can get them directly so that when they are up, updated, they're, they're right there. That's why we didn't want them in policy anymore.
Okay. And then the freedom to view is uh, comparatively new. It wasn't in our old append, we didn't include in our old policies. Um, and so again, I have that same procedural question as we're increasingly, like, let me ask, if I log on with my library card and I access some streaming services that the library provides, is my personal data available?
No.
Are we sure to our vendors?
Yes. As far as I'm concerned, they, they have clauses that keep that private. I mean, they are working with.
Do they know?
Does who know?
The vendors.
About?
That I watched movie X, Y, and Z.
Well, there's, we keep record of so that we know. So yes, I mean, there's statistics for what's being watched. Yes. But is your name being kept? No.
Even like on the mango languages, some of those had unique IDs if I recall, so.
As far as I understand, that, that is all privacy for the library. I can, I can double check on that. So if you'd like me to, that's something I can take off. And in terms of, you know, getting back on that particular question.
We should, we just need to make sure that, again, we're not claiming something that we can't really, you know, this goes back to, I mean, to be blunt.
Nope. I understand.
We see in Washington repeatedly, people start to access people's, what video games they've, or what video movies they've read, what books they subscribe to.
I, I definitely.
Anything can be used to discriminate. And so uh, the beauty of public libraries is that privacy that you go in, you read what you want. And you know what? If you want to check out Mein Kampf, nobody knows, right? Who cares?
Nobody, correct.
So um, but this is a lot of times us accessing data on servers that we don't actually own.
Yeah.
And so we really should.
I can, I can find out about that.
Okay.
Okay.
But it's not noted here where we would have to be concerned.
Okay.
Right.
Um, any other discussion? All right. Good discussion. I'll ask member Bartlett to call the roll.
Trustee Gur Murthy?
Yes.
Trustee Mishner?
Yes.
Trustee Stirring?
Yes.
Trustee Bartlett votes yes. Trustee Sherri Curry?
Yes.
Trustee Crawford?
Yes.
Trustee Dooley?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
And thanks committee for all your work, all committees actually, that worked on this and the, cause we've had great discussion and lots of good points. And just a reminder, you know, policies can change. I mean, this is not cement here that we're, the policies that we're making. And if we find that there's something, I'm sure there's going to be evaluation all the time, particularly because of the way things are going nationally and everything. We're going to have to uh, be stringent. You know, we're going to have to really look. I appreciate that. I agree with you. All of that. So anyway, the collection, of course, as all policies are really important. Uh, our second item here is the recommendation from the strategic planning committee to approve the public survey with the minimal edits um, for gathering community data. So I'll entertain a motion to approve. Member Bartlett?
So moved.
And a second from member Dooley?
Yep.
All right. Discussion. Any discussion?
Um, the, yeah, I think we highlighted a very few edits, primarily dealing with the ethnicities, which we've, we have discussed at length. Um, and I think it's also was, there was a member from the audience who suggested changing DEI and putting those in order in the question. I think that's a good, very good suggestion that we should do so that, you know, you know, for people looking at it, they, they look at it rather than equity, diversity, and inclusion. So I, I think both of those cha, you know, with those changes, it's critical that um, we start the data collection so that we can, you know, we can meet timeframes. Um, I think, I think those are fairly minor considerations and I would encourage my fellow board members to approve it.
Okay. Anyone else? Yes, member Mishner.
Yeah, thank you so much. Um, I just want to again, thank this committee for working on this because it had to be a lot of work. Um, and you all have been rock stars with it. Um, I, I would agree with uh, um, whatever we do, it should be consistent. I like that suggestion. Um, and in the industry, they, you know, I, I've talked to Julie about it. I've been to a library conference where they did say, Tara, you're EDI speaker. And here, of course, we're DEI. People switch it up. But I do like the idea of being consistent with what we say. Um, cause it just, it makes sense and it makes it um, uniform for our community, um, that's used to us saying it. However, um, as a black woman, um, you know, I would like to, like, I, I like the way that it's listed as far as, um, let's go to the survey really quick, y'all. Um, under twenty-one, I think it was, don't test my memory right now. But it's somewhere in there where it asks about ethnicity. For me, I, I actually, and, and for many people that I know that may be black or of black descent, that might, I'm just speaking to what I know on a personal basis, but I'm sure there's other groups that might feel this way as well, where that ethnicity part, how would you describe yourself, might be more important than the language. And in some ways, that's because um, languages have sometimes been stripped when slavery happened, yes. Or even um, you know, there's, there's other circumstances where the, the ethnicity or the identity might stand out more than the languages spoke. So I would keep that as is. I would suggest that not be changed.
Um, the, I think the only area we were looking to change that question was adding, adding Hispanic into that question.
Oh, the Latinx part?
And, and changing, uh, getting more definitive with the Pacific Islanders.
Perfect. Okay.
And, and Asian and the Indian population.
I am into that.
So yeah, I mean, it's just basically, basically, we're just going to be adding categories.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
And then the other one was the, just changing, you know, from EDI to DEI.
I would agree with that. I have no problem with that.
Okay.
Just one, one clarification. Um, I believe Dana said they're sending out cards to kind of all Novi residents, uh, to let them know about the survey.
Postcards.
Postcards, yes.
Yes.
How would those same residents access like a, like if they are not comfortable with a web form? How would they access like a written form?
They could come into the library and get it.
Okay.
Yep.
And that's, it'll say that on the card or whatever?
I can work with her to.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, because I think it's always important to survey.
And it'll also have the dates of public meeting feedback sessions so they could actually come to a session as well. So there's a few things we'll be putting on there, but yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Yep. For a, for a print copy.
Yeah. Not everyone's comfortable with web forms.
Okay.
I just, I want, just wanted to remind, remind the board, we've been discussing with Rethinking Libraries. They tell us that less than 10% of the feedback comes in on paper forms.
Oh.
But most of, because, you know, sending this out to the community, especially after COVID with people are used to surveys, most people go through Survey Monkey and put it in themselves. Cause that's where it will be posted.
Okay. Okay. Good. Any other discussion? Yes, member Dooley?
Really quick question. Um, uh, trustee Crawford, President Crawford brought up, you know, the ADA part of the survey. And that got me thinking, because you had brought up people who um, might be visually impaired. Um, do we have anything on our website that audibly reads out um, words? I don't know if we do.
I don't believe we do. And so uh, maybe we should check to see if there's anything they have or any suggestions. I wouldn't know.
Yeah. If there's anything we can do to just maybe double check that. Cause I want to make sure that we cover.
Can it be read to them or something to that effect? Okay.
Thank you.
Absolutely. We're going to need Strategic Plan Committee to get together very quickly. I just wanted to put that out to you. I know we're coming into the holidays, but if we're going to meet that sixth, January 6 date for this to go out, I'm going to have to touch base with Rethinking Libraries quickly for us to have a, to have a meeting to make sure we cover all this.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Number Bartlett?
Also, also note for most visually impaired software, those are PC-based programs. So it will be on the, it will be on the device that the visually impaired person uses. There aren't really anything, there's nothing really that does a website very well.
Okay. Anyone else? Yeah, member Stirring?
Um, I, I didn't think of this comment before, but it was a speaker that kind of reminded me of it. Um, in terms of some of our questions are optional. In a, in a sense, the whole survey is optional, but it's my understanding that a lot of these optional questions are designed to make sure that if a person doesn't want to um, answer the particular question due to discrimination concerns, that they don't have to. So it's like an added emphasis. But wouldn't 23 also fit into that category as an optional? To the extent that we're adding this in 20 and 21, I would think that maybe we want, and, and maybe we want to do 22 as well as an optional. They don't want to disclose what languages they speak.
Oh, I, I could see that. Yeah.
Yeah, anything.
If they don't have an asterisk, they're not required. They are optional. We actually should probably get rid of the word optional because then it won't be confusing that if you have one or you don't. Right?
We, we discussed that with Rethinking Libraries. And there were several questions on there that they said you really need them.
Oh, to say it.
To say it.
That's right.
So yeah, they, they did specify especially on 21 and yeah, and then 20.
So we can add it to 20.
You do have to, you do have to physically put optional on.
So we can add it to 22.
Okay.
That, that's my experience and how the discrimination.
There's a comfort level by reading the word to let people know that. Yes.
Added cautionary word.
Yes. Mm-hmm. Yep.
Not a problem. That's great.
Any other uh, discussion?
This might be minor, but you know, the 21, you say, please check all that apply, but I see a radio option. Maybe it's just what I see here versus checkbox. It feels like they can only choose one option there.
Usually a radio button is either or.
Yeah. So you might want to check that.
Okay.
It should be more a checkbox.
Okay. With the minimal changes.
Everybody's taking notes, right? We're all going to have to check each other.
Minimal changes and suggestions. All are appreciated.
These are all good. These are really good.
It's all good. Um, but I think we're okay to vote. All right? Are we all right? Please call the roll.
Trustee, trustee Mishner?
Yes.
Trustee Stirring?
Uh, yes.
Trustee Bartlett votes yes. Trustee Sherri Curry?
Yes.
Trustee Crawford?
Yes.
Trustee Dooley?
Yes.
Trustee Gur Murthy?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Awesome.
All right. Number three here, recommendation from Building and Grounds Committee to approve the quote from Allied Building Services for a not to exceed amount of twenty-nine thousand three hundred and five, is that what?
Should be a comma, sorry.
All right.
Not a period. Twenty-nine dollars, I wish.
What a bargain.
For the uh,
Should be twenty-nine thousand.
Air conditioning unit in the server room. So um, yeah, we'll just put a comma there. This is unfortunately an unexpected cost. You've all been aware of it. We've been, we went out to bid, did not have a very good response from the bid, and then went to quotes in order to get information. So um, we do need to move quickly. I'm, I'm getting more nervous every day, the heat and the temperatures in the building. So. Okay. Okay. All right. I'll entertain a motion to approve. Uh, member Stirring, yes.
Um, so moved.
All right. And member Guru Murthy, you want to second this, don't you? Yes, she wants to second it. Yeah, I thought you did. All right. Uh, any more discussion?
I just have a question. Um, so because I don't know too much about industrial um, HVAC versus home. Like with the new temperature gauges for zones in a building, do they have smart thermometers now?
The whole, the holes, the whole building has, has sensors in it for us to know temperature. But this, just so you know, trustee um, Dooley, this is specific to our, our AC air conditioning unit, specific to our server room, just to keep our server room cool. It is not part of the larger HVAC system of the building. So this is a separate unit specifically for the equipment in our server room.
Perfect. Thank you.
You're, you're very welcome. Okay. Any other discussion?
I, I would just like to say that all of us on the committee were troubled by the expensive quotes that we receive.
Yes.
And, and I really have to do, you know, hands out congratulations to trust, to trustee Sherri Curry for all of his efforts in trying to get those bits down, and to Julie and her staff, because we just didn't like them. Um, and we, we're, and worked very hard at trying to, trying to get them down. And it's like, I can just tell you, I go to, I hear from so many library boards today, or not library boards, but like condo boards, boy, I wish we'd done this last year. It's costing us twice as much to do it this year, you know? Whether it's a roof, whether, whether it's landscape. And we had the same kind of experience. The bids just seemed high, but really they worked so hard at reaching out to other vendors to try to get these bids in, in an acceptable range. And they deserve a lot of accolades for doing that.
Okay. Anyone else? Yes?
I just had a quick note. Um, so it is expensive. However, we just went through like those failures with some of our equipment, right?
Right. We don't want this. This adds to the concern of a failure. This is why, yes.
And I made a big deal about that.
Yes, you did.
So I'm happy about it and I'm grateful, of course, I'm grateful that you actually um, are making it happen before we have any more failures. Cause that's more expensive.
Yeah. And that it, so it's, yeah, we want to move very quickly.
Yeah. Thank you.
So, yeah, so the total for Allied on page 98, um,
Did I put the wrong number?
Well, it's higher than what we're making the motion for. So that's kind of why I wanted a better understanding, um, too, because.
I have twenty-nine three oh five. Okay.
Just because on page ninety-eight, it's forty-nine nine one five.
That was an original cost on a different unit.
Okay.
This group, this committee has had us come back to be looking. Yep. It, it was from 11/13. I just wanted you to still have a history of the costs and the pricing that was coming in over the months that we had been looking at. We finally got even another quote with another recommendation, which is where we got to the five ton unit that we're going to be purchasing.
Perfect. Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
So that's how they started. That's how high they could have been.
Well, thank you committee, because that's awesome.
I just wanted you to have still that history in, in the, in the packet.
Okay. Thank you.
Absolutely. No, thank you for pointing that out. So it is twenty-nine thousand three oh five. Okay. We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion?
Okay. We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, you may call the roll.
Trustee Stirring?
Yes.
Trustee Bartlett votes yes. Trustee Sherri Curry?
Yes.
Trustee Crawford?
Yes.
Trustee Dooley?
Yes.
Trustee Gur Murthy?
Yes.
Trustee Michener?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
All right then. Well, please note on your, the upcoming times, meeting dates and everything, particularly the budget session, which is on a date that we don't normally meet. So make sure you get that on your calendars, everyone, because those are going to be important.
I think I sent you calendar invites. I'm almost positive. So, and there'll be more coming. So, okay.
And also, because you're ambassadors now, because you're ambassadors, make sure you know all the library closures, times, when somebody says, well, I went by the library and I couldn't get in. Why, why is that? So anyway, you'll know that. And I do hope that you all will enjoy a warm and stress-free holiday season. I'm putting you all on Santa's nice list.
Aww.
And, yeah. And I want to thank each and every one of you, really, for all you've done this past year to make Novi the great city that it is, and for all residents, but particularly our great library, for all you've done for the library. It's really important work that we do here. And I want to thank the staff in particular, and I hope you pass on the word to them. And even our attorney, we want to thank our attorney also.
Yes.
You know, we, yeah, I know. You've been, you know, you've been with us and we feel your support all the time at every meeting. So thank you very much. And with that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn. Uh, Member Michener? There's a second, I'm going to go look for a second over here. Member Sherri Curry, all right. There we go. And any discussion about our adjourning? No, I don't see any.
Happy holidays, everyone. Thank you.
Please call the roll.
Trustee Sherri Curry?
Yes.
Trustee Crawford?
Yes.
Trustee Dooley?
Yes.
Trustee Gur Murthy?
Yes.
Trustee Michener?
Yes.
Trustee Stirring?
Yes.
Trustee Bartlett votes yes. We're adjourned.